We do have a number of speakers who have signed up dealing with the issue of homelessness. And we've got several speakers, and we only got 30 minutes. I encourage you to maybe group your comments together there. But we'll begin and move as quick as we can. First person is Ruth Burkha, please. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
I will.
You know the drill, Ruth.
I do know the drill. Good evening, Mayor Joines, Mayor Potem Adams, and members of the council. I am Ruth Cole Burkha. I'm the Executive Director of City With Dwellings, and we serve many of our city's unhoused citizens. We're at 502 North Broad Street. I know some of our West End neighbors are here tonight to raise concerns about crime and nuisance issues near our day center at the edge there of West End. And we share the desire for safe, welcoming neighborhoods. Everyone deserves to feel safe wherever they live. But homelessness itself is not the cause of these problems, and people experiencing homelessness are not the enemy. In fact, they are more likely to be victims of crime than perpetrators of crime. What we face is not a people problem, it's a housing problem. City With Dwellings has been part of the West End neighborhood, the edge there, for more than a decade, first through our winter shelter at Augsburg Lutheran Church, then on Spring Street, and now at Sixth and Broad. What has changed is visibility. Street homelessness is rising, and the crisis isn't new, but it's harder to ignore now. Every day, our staff and our volunteers help people stabilize, connect to services, and move toward housing. And we're good at it, but the need is outpacing our capacity. We very much appreciate the city's role in administering HUD's Continuum of Care and ESG funds, which support part of our work. But those resources are limited, we know that. If we want real progress, we need stronger local investment on all fronts. What will truly make Winston-Salem safer is investing in solutions that work: housing, supportive services, and prevention, so that folks don't fall into homelessness to begin with. Please see us as partners in this work, in building these solutions. The people most affected by this crisis are often the ones who best understand what is needed. We are ready to work with the city, with our neighbors, and other stakeholders to make it happen. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Burkha. Emily Harkins.
My name is Emily Harkins. I'm from 1661 Light Streets. I serve as the Senior Pastor at The Dwelling, a church community here in Winston that aims to do life with our unhoused neighbors. And I come tonight with an invitation to you, not an argument, or not statistics, and not even a complaint, though I'm sure you get many of those, just pure invitation. I want to invite you to come and sit with your unhoused neighbors, not in a "service to" kind of way, but in a "neighbors with" kind of way, to share a meal, to listen to a story, to walk a block side by side. Because until we sit together, we will keep missing the truth, that we are more alike than we are different. When you sit beside someone who carries their life in a worn backpack, you discover the weight of their dreams are not so different than your own. And when you listen to your neighbors talk about their children, you hear what sounds a lot like the love that you have for your own. And when you laugh at a joke while sitting on a front step, you remember that joy doesn't need an address to be real. Too often, conversations about homelessness are filled with fear and blame and distance. But when fear fades, when we learn each other's names; blame softens when we begin to see faces instead of categories; and distance closes when we dare to share time and space together. Here is what I have learned: caring for one another is not just responsibility, it is joy. It is the kind of joy that surprises you and sneaks up on you in the middle of a random Tuesday. I have known that joy in the stories and the laughter and the grief that I share with my community, and I believe that our whole city should have the experience of that kind of joy together. Because the truth is, our neighbors are already contributing to this city. They are poets who give us words, they are artists and musicians, they bring us beauty, they are workers who clean up the streets, they are the people that push broken-down cars up Broad Street. They are your neighbors, they are the heartbeat of this city just as much as you and I are. But the question is whether or not we'll recognize them as such. So here's my invitation again: come and spend time with your neighbors, learn their names, hear their stories. They are not a problem to solve, they are your people, they are your neighbors, and they deserve that kind of love and affirmation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brooke Devan.
Brooke Young, 3050 South Stratford Road, Winston-Salem. Good to see you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and council again in my stall. I serve as the Deacon at The Dwelling, and I'm here tonight to express our unwavering support for our partner, City With Dwellings, and the vital work they do every single day. At the heart of what we're facing is not only a housing crisis, it's a crisis of compassion. We are being asked to choose between comfort of those in homes and care for our neighbors who are unhoused, between fear and faith. And I want to be clear: fear is not the same thing as being uncomfortable. Uncomfortable is okay, but doesn't mean our neighbors who we love are a threat. It means we have stepped close to something that is hard to see, the pain of others. In the last two years, we have seen a drastic rise in homelessness around the country, and here in Winston-Salem, just the same. The fastest-growing group is actually families with children, not violent criminals. This is the outcome of disinvestment of policy and neglect, mostly at the federal level. We gotta get those head fundings to do the things we gotta do. And in response, The Dwelling and City With Dwellings are doing what church and community organizations should do: we are welcoming, walking alongside, and working towards housing and healing. We have been good faith partners, in constant conversation with our neighbors, housed and unhoused. We've listened to concerns, and we are actively working to relocate our winter shelter for this season in partnership with the city and the county, not out of shame, but out of care for relationships and requests. No community or part of community gets to opt out of this work. If we push people out, if we displace service providers, or shame those in need, we do not solve homelessness. We spread it, we deepen it. As such, I want you to know, we do not stand alone. The Dwelling is part of Forsyth IAF Sponsoring Committee, a growing collective of over 30 churches and community institutions across this city. Together, we are organizing for the common good and a unified truth: homelessness is not a criminal issue, it is a moral one. So, what if, instead of asking, "Where should they go?", ask, "How do we respond faithfully and compassionately as one city?" Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Schultz.
My name is Ron Schultz. My address is 502 North Broad Street. Why is downtown on the decline, you might ask? If you look at social media, the homeless are at the forefront of the list of causes. It's easy to blame the people who are too busy trying to survive and not having the time or energy to defend themselves from ominous posters. Sure, homelessness is an issue, but in reality, it is a symptom of a deeper societal disease that seemingly most metropolitan areas suffer. Why don't they just get a job? Stop and think about the barriers. Fortunately, The Dwelling Church runs a shower trailer, where three days a week you can get cleaned up and find a little dignity. Every Sunday, they provide two meals and spiritual fellowship in a no-judgment zone. Then there's The City of Dwelling, two separate entities, which gives us a mailing address and helps navigate the process to get vital documents and help get people housed and off the streets, a very daunting process that would be difficult, if even possible, to navigate on your own. Just remember, in today's society, most people are only one or two major financial crises away from finding themselves on the streets, and it is always a surprise when it happens. There are no guidebooks or city maps telling people where to go for the little bits of help that is available. Maybe the growing homeless population hurts downtown business, maybe, but that is not the real cause of the decline. It's just not simple. There are economic factors: inflation and consumer budgets, high inflation, strained household budgets for lower and middle-income consumers, making dining out a less affordable luxury, decreased consumer spending overall. Consumers are spending less at restaurants, leading to lower foot traffic and sales at many establishments. Economic uncertainty: broader economic concerns, including job market volatility and the impact of trade policies, making consumers more cautious about discretionary spending. Operational pressures, like rising labor costs. Labor expenses have increased significantly due to factors like rising minimum wage in a tighter labor market. Volatile food costs: the cost of food ingredients remain volatile due to weather, supply chain issues, and trade policies increasing operational expenses. Margin pressure: the combination of higher labor and food costs puts significant pressure on profit margins. Staffing and turnover: many businesses struggle with high employee turnover rates and staffing shortages, which impact service speed and efficiency. And of course, a lot of people throw in the new meterless parking into the mix, and that may be a contributing factor in the decline of downtown. After all, the new system is a big jump from feeding quarters into the meter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Berkeley Von Fetsonson, excuse my mispronunciation.
My name is Berkeley Von Filitch, and I live at 5909 Brookberry Farm Road. Good evening, Mayor Joines, Mayor Potem Adams, and council members. I'm also a small business owner with an office in downtown Winston-Salem. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about this city and all who call it home. I've heard rumors circulating, the idea that people experiencing homelessness are being bused in from somewhere else. I want to be very clear that this is not true. According to the national data, roughly 80% to 85% of people receiving services are from the same community where they lost housing, and that is true here also. They are not strangers. These are our neighbors, people who grew up here, worked here, paid rent here, and now trying to survive here. We are not seeing people brought in, or seeing more people pushed out, out of housing, out of safety, and too often, out of dignity. This isn't just happening in Winston-Salem, it's everywhere. According to the most recent 2024 federal data, more than 653,000 people were homeless on a single night across the United States, the second-highest number ever recorded in the U.S., only slightly behind the 2023 historic spike. I also want to speak to you from a personal perspective. My business is downtown. My church is downtown. I have also attended Sunday services at The Dwelling, which I highly recommend. It's beautiful. I walked the library, I've walked to meetings. I have met many of the people supported by The Dwelling and City With Dwellings, and I want to say this clearly: I do not feel unsafe. What I do feel is compassion, because discomfort is not the same as danger. Seeing poverty like this up close may be unsettling, may feel unsettling, but that does not make our neighbors dangerous. We can't confuse vulnerability with threat. We need solutions, not scapegoats. City With Dwellings and The Dwelling are trying their hardest to provide solutions, and they're doing real work navigating broken systems, helping people get IDs, apply for housing, access health care, and survive while waiting for services that currently take months or even years to obtain. Let me leave you with this: no neighborhood gets to opt out of compassion, no business gets to be exempt from caring. If we love this city, we must love everyone in it, not just the comfortable parts. Let's not meet this crisis with fear, let's meet it with courage and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hannah Broughton.
Thank you, I'm Hannah Broughton, 706 South Green Street. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to be present and speak in this forum. I would like the city council to please revisit the location that the Twin City Harm Reduction Group operates. This is the Sterile Syringe Program located in Green Street, United Methodist Church in West Salem. While I openly agree they must unfortunately provide a group of services for a segment of society that has been neglected, I, along with many of my immediate neighbors of the exchange, feel that this operation should be run outside of predominantly residential area. I ask the city council to please go back and watch the city public safety meeting in April of 2017 and the related meetings that were run during that same time. It was proposed to the city and to our neighborhood that that exchange was going to be in that location for a limited amount of time until they found a permanent location. There were a few speakers that were for the exchange staying in that location that is now operated in. Most of those in support then will be similar to those supporting it now: they will be the employees of the exchange, the employees of the church, and residents that reside out of the immediate bullseye of issues. While the exchange group will point to their recent neighborhood sweep this past weekend as they are doing their part, we neighbors still find drug biohazards discarded in our yards, streets, and parks. These biohazards are contaminated with illegal substances that we all know can do great bodily harm. What happens when one small child finds something is curious: our pets pick up something in their mouths, or an ill-informed adult picks up something and has an overdose event. The negative effects do not stop at just discarded biohazards. I ask you, council, to please read the many letters I've had residents send you in the last week or so. Please read the stories of harassment and terror that we have all experienced being so close to this organization's operation, our belief that just adding stricter guardrails on the existing location will not solve the health and safety issues we constantly have to experience. We are not asking for the service to the city or county to be stopped, we are asking for it to be relocated to a sensible location that will bring safety to all parties involved. The exchange in West Salem is very much an anomaly across the state, located in the middle of a neighborhood. Please take a look at the models that some other cities in North Carolina are operating on. Some cities and counties have their exchanges partnered with health clinics and medical locations outside of residential neighborhoods, where their patrons are much less likely to openly dispose of biohazards and much less likely to harass innocent bystanders in public.
Broughton, thank you. Your time's up. Thank you very much. Terrace Clark.
My name is Terrace Clark. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to all y'all today. I'm a food bin at the Carolina Classic Fair, have been for over 10 years, over a decade, probably closer to 15. 2024, my application was rejected. I contacted Mayor Potem, she got me a meeting with the city manager and the facilities manager for the fair. We sat down, I was told because they felt like I wasn't honest about my revenue, okay? With no proof, just an accusation, my application was rejected. Now, I was told we could move past that, but there was no more space for that year. Keep that in mind, no more space. So I applied this year, my application was accepted, good. I was under the assumption I'd be put back in my original spot that I had been in for over 10 years already, but no, they put me somewhere else. They put me in a spot that wasn't there last year. So the spot that they put me in, if you look at the vendor map for last year, it wasn't even there. So they could have put me there last year if they wanted to, let's just make that a point. But, my point is, all I need is for someone to make a call and have them put me back in my original spot. I was told that the person that they put in my spot that just happened to sell the exact same thing that I sold, the exact same menu that I have, had a very good selling year. I'm pretty sure they did. I spent the last 10 years building that spot for that item. So that's what people was coming in for. Councilwoman Jordan, you know location is key when it comes to food, you know that. Councilman Hall, I met you, we shared an office building together, congratulated you on your campaign. Councilman Taylor, the name of the fair has changed, other things need to change, too. Some more things need to change. Mr. Mayor, I plead you: put a vendor on the fair planning committee. It doesn't have to be me, but would I volunteer to do it? Yes, I would. But a vendor should be on that committee. I was told by the facilities manager of the fairground that that would be a conflict of interest. Mr. Bowman, I live in your ward. I was told by the facilities manager that would be a conflict of interest, but that would be like me telling y'all, y'all can't be on the city council because y'all live in Winston-Salem. It makes no sense. There should be a vendor on that fair planning committee, and if there was, then problems like mine wouldn't occur, because there would be someone on the inside that could stop that problem before it revealed itself. But I need somebody to help me get back into my spot, me and my family. We built that spot up for over a decade, I've literally shed blood, sweat, and tears in that spot, I've caught myself on fire in that spot, working with a gas cooker. And we have family moments at that fair when people come back. I've seen kids grow from 2 to 15, and all I'm asking is to be put back in our spot so that we can re-enjoy our customers and have a profitable year. I want to have my bit in convention center year, the best year I ever had.
Good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank y'all.
Dennis Sykes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Potem Adams, my name is Dennis Sykes. I live at 811 West Fifth Street in Winston-Salem. I'm speaking tonight as a representative of the All God's Children Ministry Team from Noelwood Baptist Church. We are distressed at the idea we're hearing of considering making it illegal to sit down or lie down on sidewalks in Winston-Salem. In other words, a loitering ordinance. A loitering ordinance would treat our unhoused brothers and sisters with fear or distaste instead of compassion. Loitering ordinances have a pretty sordid history in our country. Arresting people simply for being somewhere allows the authorities to decide who has the right to be in the streets for any purpose and who does not have that right. As a group dedicated to social justice, the All God's Children's Ministry Team sees our right to protest in public spaces being threatened. On a personal note, my home is located in the historic West End Overlay District, directly across Pilot View Street from the Augsburg Community Center. I want to say that City With Dwellings and The Dwelling have been excellent neighbors. My wife and I feel safer now than we did before they moved into this location. Their influx of volunteers has created a friendlier vibe in the area, and we have not been bothered at all by any of their clients. The growing visibility of our unhoused citizens is not a problem, but a symptom of a problem. City With Dwellings is not a problem, it is a part of a solution. Winston-Salem already has laws that address the complaints being made by some of our neighbors. We don't need to criminalize the mere visibility of anyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Mayers.
I'm sorry.
I think you two must have the same last name or something.
We have about five minutes left, so if we could speak expositively.
Okay. My name is Matthew Mayers, I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. I'm here with a couple of friends tonight, and since you hear from me a lot, I'm going to let them talk to y'all about our desire to see the city really lean into energy efficiency for city operations.
Good.
Thank you. Greetings, council members. My name is Margaret Miller, I live at 1179 Edgbrook Drive.
Hi, good evening. My name is Annette Hayes, and I am a resident of Winston-Salem, as well as I have a business here. And I wanted to say congratulations on all the things that are happening here in Winston-Salem. And in terms of sustainability, we need that in order to keep going, in order to be competitive to other cities, especially in the triad and greater North Carolina. There are some things that we can do better for sustainability, as well as taking care of our citizens and our energy. So we want to make sure that we are working collectively with all the organizations that are represented. I know we work on different programs together, and it's important that we work together and not in silos to accomplish the things we need to accomplish. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, we just want to encourage the council to really pursue energy efficiency of our city facilities in a deliberate and intentional way. You know, many times, doing the right thing is costly, right? It costs us personally, or it costs us money, to stand up and do the right thing. In this case, you know, climate change is a huge problem, and pursuing the city's commitment to become carbon neutral by 2050, pursuing that by addressing energy efficiency of city facilities is doing the right thing, but it's also, at the same time, going to save the city money. By common grace, these two goals are aligned, and we can accomplish both at the same time. So just really encourage you to focus on that and provide staff and other analyses and pursue those goals to improve city facilities. Matt, do you have any final comment?
They left me sometime, so why not? I also wanted to thank Mr. Huff, who last week reported to the Public Works Committee on the state of the storm sewer, stormwater system, and he said something very interesting near the beginning of his presentation, which was, storms that we used to get here once a decade, we're getting several times a year now. Climate change is coming for us, y'all. And you raised our taxes, we really want you to use that money wisely, and a big way of doing that, change out your light bulbs, hire somebody to manage the energy use in the buildings of the city. You're going to hear more from us, obviously, but hope you have a good night, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayers. Denise Little.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Councilwoman Burke, and other council members. On May 28th, the police... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm 1801 Hattie Circle.
Could you put the mic down just a little bit, Ms. Little?
We can't hear you.
There you go, thank you.
How's that?
Good, thank you.
Okay. On May 28th, the police department was in our neighborhood. They had gotten called for a break-in of a new home that was built but unoccupied on Bramble Brook, which is parallel to my street. They gave chase to two 13-year-old boys, and that chase came through my yard. The K-9 group attempted to jump the fence, but they jumped the wood fence that I have, but they didn't quite make it, so it started to fall. Officer Pace came chasing after them, and he just broke through it. So at the end of that, Officer Pace came to us, and he told my husband and I what had happened, and there was another officer there with him. And apparently, he was on the K-9 team, and he said, "Why don't we charge that to K-9?" He said, "Because I'm the one who finished the fence off. K-9 just got it started." I was grateful for them to recognize that the cost was theirs. So they said that they would turn that in, and someone would be contacting us. No one ever contacted us. I called 311 on July 2nd and was directed to fill out a form. I completed that form. Zoe Olet, wonderful man, I wish I could talk to him every time I called for the city, but he helped me with that. He set up the claim, and unfortunately, he had to call me back to tell me that because the police was in chase and not negligent, they would not fix my fence. I was encouraged to, after I followed the process, I was encouraged, "Come before you all, to see if there was anything that I could do." The police owned the damage, they owned the damage, they were willing to pay for that out of their budget, but I can't seem to get it fixed. out of their budget, but I can't seem to get a part of that. So I'm asking for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Thank you.
Ms. Lanier, can you follow up with her, please? Ms. Lanier here is... She'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, when that ends, it's the time we set aside for our public comment period, and John, I'm sorry, but we ran out of time.
Ninth on the list, what happened?
Beg pardon?
I was ninth on the list, what happened?
You got skipped.
What's going on?
John, if you've... Come on, John. We've got time for one more.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, council members, nice to see you. In a recent West End Association Public Safety Meeting with over fifty people in attendance, a city official pointed out that there were two troubled areas for the homeless downtown. One was Sixth and Broad, where City with Dwellings is located, and the other one is Marshall Park. Not the legacy any of us wanted for wanted. In looking for solutions, my dear friend George Bryan from the West End Association and I met with Director Chris Leib of the Bethesda Center for the Homeless, looking for solutions. We found out that he has a hundred beds, seventy for men and thirty for women, and we were shocked to find out that his day center has been closed since March. When open, that day center offers restrooms, laundry, showers, phones, air conditioning and heat, a mailing address, internet and computers, and counseling. That's seven days a week, that's not two or three. We need to get that day center open, we need to do what we can to get that day center open. Secondly, I'm sure you read in the recent article in the paper about my friend Greg Carlisle, owner of the Millennium Center on Fifth Street. The paper quotes Greg as saying that his customers from the hotels around Fourth Street are told to avoid Trade Street between Marshall Park and Fifth Street to get to his events. The valid reason for that is people using Trade have to run a gauntlet of people hanging out in that corridor, partly because of the transportation center, but mostly because of Guru Store. That bodega, which is owned by a local attorney, sells one dollar a can of beers in paper bags all day, every day, and they buy the beer and they walk down to Marshall Park and sit there all day, come back and rotate. And there's another group of people that just hang out in that corridor, and there's some drug trade there, there's drinking and carrying on, so it becomes a real gauntlet to try to walk down there. So I think we need a carrot and a stick approach. I'd love to see the Bethesda Day Center open, I think it's really important that we do that. And then I'd like to see inspections and police attack, not attack, work on that corridor of Trade Street to make it safe and less intimidating. I'm willing to meet with anybody at any time to try to find solutions to this problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Ms. Mayers, do you want to comment on the day center at Bethesda? Kind of update on that?
The day center at Bethesda did close down. We have had discussions with the Bethesda Center and Pastor Lowe about the possibility of opening that up. I do know that he is seeking funds at this point in time to be able to do that. It's my understanding that they're closed between eight and two, or somewhere in the early afternoon, and then their clientele can come in in the evening before they go into the shelter at night. So there is discussions ongoing about trying to do that, and I know that that's being held with both other corporate individuals and other foundations, as well as with the city. All the city funds, federal funds that we have for homeless services or services of this type, have been allocated out this year, and so there are no additional federal funds that we have to go towards this issue. But that's... But there is ongoing discussion.
There's ongoing discussion about it. Good. All right, I'm gonna close the public comment period and recognize...
Yes. Mayor, thank you, members of the council and the public. Again, we're talking about it, all we do is talk. You know, all of us, just like was stated earlier, need to all get on the same page that, you know, this is just not a City of Winston-Salem issue, it's an issue of the whole country. And not once, and I'm not throwing no shade at nobody under the bus, but you never mentioned the county. County and the state are in charge of health and human services. That is their lane. As the manager just said, whatever funding that the City of Winston-Salem gets from the Fed, the state, for the continuing of care, it was already allocated in our budget. We don't have any money. So if we all want to get on the page, like I said earlier, two, three years ago, you can't talk about housing without talking about homelessness first. And we, as a city, I know we need in our little silos, because I just went to one this past week, but if we don't invite the people who are the customers, or the victims, or the clients, or the stakeholders, the philanthropic people, the business people, the government people, we all gotta get on the same page, y'all. And we can't be scared to be in the same room to talk about a problem or an issue that we know is there, but we need to stop talking, we need to come together, and we need to make solutions, one or two. That's all we need to start with. And I bet you we can help get this... It will never be eliminated, but we can help make our situation better for our homeless population and others if we would just come together and establish two priority reasons, solutions. That's all I'm saying.
Councilman Hall has to be recognized.